We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis. Councilmember Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruckregel.
Present.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-43, which continues to limit any gatherings of more than 50 people, and Executive Orders 2020-07, 33, 44, and 59, requiring the provision of video, audio, or telephonic access to meetings, as well as the CDC recommending social distancing of at least six feet between persons, City Hall has implemented changes and restrictions for the city council meeting on October 27, 2020 while complying with the Open Meetings Act. The council meeting will be conducted in person with members of the council and some staff present in council chambers with Plexo glass barriers and with department heads in Room 404 with the ability to remotely answer questions while remaining a six-foot distance. Fifteen members of the public will be permitted inside council chambers at a time. Temperature screenings are required upon entry to City Hall. Face coverings are required while inside. Members of the public and media are invited to watch through the live stream, YouTube, Television Channel 22, or through WCBU radio. Submissions for public comment were received through the city clerk's office. The agenda, minutes, and video podcast of the meeting will be available online through the city website. I'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent We have one proclamation this evening for National Respiratory Care Week. Good evening. We have Scott Laird with us this evening, the manager of respiratory care for Unity Point Health Methodist and Proctor Hospitals. Whereas on September 15, 1983, President Ronald Reagan designated the last week of October as Respiratory Care Week, providing not only visibility to those suffering from lung conditions but also to those who care for them. And whereas respiratory illnesses are among the most common medical conditions in the United States, and whereas respiratory therapists care for patients with breathing difficulties due to chronic conditions like lung cancer, bronchitis, asthma, and COPD, and this annual recognition also aims to boost interest in the career field of respiratory therapy or other healthcare professions. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has called attention to the need for qualified respiratory therapists who are committed to high-quality patient care. Throughout this pandemic, these professionals have collaborated with their healthcare colleagues and shown their dedication to their patients and the community. And whereas in 2020, these healthcare heroes are more important than ever, the American Association for Respiratory Care has designated "Together, We Save Lives" as the theme for this year's Respiratory Care Week. Now therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize October the 25th through the 31st, 2020, as Respiratory Care Week in Peoria, Illinois. Mr. Laird, we appreciate you being here, and any comments are welcome.
I want to say thank you to Mayor Artis and the City of Peoria for recognizing our profession. As we all know, 2020 has been a very trying year for everyone, but especially in healthcare. Our team covers a vast majority of the Peoria area, between Methodist, Proctor, Beacon. We have a pulmonary rehab group, a durable medical equipment company, and also a pulmonary clinic. So we have respiratory therapists throughout all these regions. Of course, during this pandemic, they've delivered outstanding care, as all Unity Point does consistently, year in and year out, but especially this year during the COVID crisis. And our community members have been at utmost importance to us to care for them through this pandemic. As Mayor Artis stated in the proclamation, respiratory care is an unknown field until maybe the pandemic, and it's sad that it takes something like that. But we're always short on staff, we're always in need. There's a respiratory program at ICC locally, so please push that within our community and in our high schools and even our middle schools. We're always reaching out to young minds and to get into a great program and a great field. So again, thank you guys and appreciate very much.
Councilman Ruckregel?
I move to approve the minutes of the joint city council and town board meeting held on October 13, 2020, and the minutes of the special city council meeting held on October 20, as printed.
Seconded by Councilman Grab. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have one township item to handle this evening. 20-266 is a request to approve the proposed estimated tax levy of $1,286,533, which is an estimated tax rate not to exceed .088, and this is for the town of the City of Peoria.
Trustee Grab?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point in our meeting, we'll be wearing our town trustee hats, and I'd like to put a little frame on the tax levy that you're being asked to approve tonight. I'd like to begin with Treasurer Nick Dean explaining a little bit about our deliberations.
Thank you, Trustee Grab. I'm here to tell you that the township officials have met twice. We're here today to offer and suggest a recommendation levy of $1,286,583, and that was a unanimous decision of the board, which sets the rate at .088. This levying rate was the unanimous recommendation as a result of Councilman Grab encouraging us to work together to find a common rate and levy. Cost reductions, efficiencies, and the voucher system led to this decision. There will be no changes in township level of service or its delivery of services. I am pleased to report to you that the taxpayers and the tax rate will be the lowest in 25 years. We would like you, at the trustees, for unanimous support of this recommendation.
Nick Dean and Township Supervisor Abnour, could you come forward and give us a little more perspective on this number we're being asked to approve tonight? Our city clerk and supervisor of assessments, Max Schlafly, Beth Ball, are counting on both of you to establish the frame tonight. They will remain silent.
Well, I appreciate that time here, and I appreciate the work for everybody in the township, from the collector to the assessor and the clerk, because we were a little off at the beginning, and we did compromise on a number that I felt was comfortable, because my number-one concern is the service to our clients, and I would never jeopardize that. I would never compromise the services that we provide to our clients, and keeping in mind that the taxpayers who fund this, you know, what's best for them. So I think we threaded a needle real well here. I think we walked the fine line and did a great job. Actually, I also think we will be able to increase a few of our services. So I'm very comfortable where we're at. I think it's a good compromise, so I think we did a really good job.
Supervisor Abnour, and with that, I would move to approve the levy as outlined.
Seconded by Trustee Kelly. Any discussion on the motion? Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to applaud the efforts of our township officials. This looks to be a surprising and very good levy. I'm just very happy with it, and thank you for your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? I'll just add my appreciation as well. A lot of the meetings that the elected township folks do for us go unseen, and in addition to Trustee Grab's participation on behalf of the city council, so to all of you that we're able to come together and reach a consensus and provide a number back to our taxpayers, the lowest number in decades. Twenty, how many years was it, Mr. Treasurer? Twenty-five years. So maybe if Mr. Kravitz doesn't have anything bigger tomorrow, the biggest reduction in 25 years could be like banner above the fold. Who knows? Yeah, huge. So thank you all for your work on this, and we have a motion in a second. Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thanks again for your efforts. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we're at 20-267, and this is a public hearing regarding the proposed 2021 City of Peoria Revised Annual Budget.
Okay, we have a motion to go into public hearing on the budget by Councilman Grab, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Seeing no objections, please cast your ballots to go into public hearing. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed 2021 City of Peoria Revised Annual Budget. Anyone who would like to address the city is welcome to step forward and make a comment. First call. Second call. Anyone who would like to address the council regarding the public hearing for the proposed budget for 2021? Third and final call. Anyone who would like to speak in this public hearing regarding the proposed 2021 City of Peoria Revised Annual Budget? Seeing none, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Councilmember Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Ali. If there's no discussion on that, please cast your votes to close the public hearing. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at regular business. 20-268 is a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Councilman Rigenbach?
Move for the approval?
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Kelly. Discussion, Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. City Manager Urick, I did receive the message, I'm sure all the council did as well, as far as the updates on the expenses to date. I think that was a couple of weeks ago. There was a couple of line items I would be requesting that we could get some of the details to, those two line items. And then my next question would be whether you have that information now or give a report back on any new expenses since our last meeting.
Thank you. If you want to share with me what those two line items are, I'll be happy to take those two, and we'll get the information back for you.
I don't have those with me. I just remember there being two line items, one for overtime expenses and I don't recall the other one, but it was a general statement.
Because we gave you the summary. I got it. We'll give you the detailed expense, so you can take a look at it. You got it. We'll be happy to send that report back out to everyone.
Question I had was, the next question I had, is there any new expenses since then? If you could please tell us about those.
We'll be happy to update if there have been any additional expenses that we've submitted. At this point in time, it would be mostly expenses that we've incurred for PPE or cleaning supplies and things along those lines and that nature, but anything we have, we'll make sure that we get that updated and sent to you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Corporation Counsel, could you clarify, at least for me, or perhaps for all of us, that the, my understanding of the declaration of emergency allows us to first, perhaps, qualify for some help from the state, maybe from the feds, I don't know about that, and also that it allows us to take some of, take our expenses off of the, of our standard expenditure line and have those reimbursed, perhaps, by the state. In other words, the rationale for the emergency powers is not just that the mayor is going to decide to do something extraordinary. It's, it has, it truly has to do with the ongoing expenses of our fight in the coronavirus. I'm speaking too long. Am I about right on that?
Thank you, Councilman. That's a good question. The primary purpose of the emergency declaration is to do, I believe, as the city manager explained last month, to make sure that we have a clear, let's say, line in the sand for when our FEMA expenses started and things that would be eligible. So that's why you get continuing report backs on the amount of money that have been spent on cleaning, sanitation, PPE. Housing resources were discussed, I think, early on over the summer. How you choose to account for those, necessarily moving those from one line item to another, that is not necessarily affected by this declaration. I mean, that is an accounting decision that the finance department can make in conjunction with the city manager. But the reason for the ongoing declaration, as you stated, is to make it clear that the expenses could be submitted to FEMA for reimbursement, and it does allow some additional purchasing power for things that are not on the budget. So as an example, if we were to have an outbreak of the, of COVID in a particular department, and perhaps that required some unscheduled or unbudgeted deep cleaning of, say, a ventilation system, for example, we could get that done in a timely manner so that we could get employees back into that space as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, just as a question, Mr. City Manager, do we have an update on where we're at with our local state of emergency with COVID? Any new news for the community?
Any, do we have any update on, say that again?
The state of emergency of COVID?
Well, so currently where we are, and I think, and all this information is out on the Illinois Department of Public Health's website, Region 2 is actually trending up at this point in time. Peoria County is trending up, and that's a concern that we have. I think as we look at the data, I'm concerned that if we have a series of days where our positivity rate, the seven-day trend in positivity rate is over 8%, the state can come in and put in additional measures, mitigation measures into it, into effect here in our region, and that's something that we need to watch. I think there's currently three other regions in the state that are under those enhanced mitigation measures, and Chicago has announced today that they're going into additional enhanced mitigation measures as well. So it's a concern. It's a concern because we have a large region that we're encompassed with, a large number of other counties, but the numbers here in Peoria County are growing as well, and so that's a point of concern.
Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
20-269 is a request from the CDBG Public Services Advisory Commission to approve the 2021 CDBG Public Services Priorities and Application.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first like to thank the CDBG Public Service Advisory Commission for all their work on this proposal that's going to, that's come before you today. As you know, as many of you know, I'm the council liaison for this commission, and what you have before you are the 10 recommended areas that they would like for the city council to approve their receiving applications for funding. If, I'm not going to read the material to you, but in front of you, we have approximately $250,000 that has come in through CDBG to be awarded, but that award doesn't happen until we approve, this body approves, the 10 items that they have selected as priorities. And then attached also, you have the application that they have, Cassie and her team have whittled down the application so that it is more user-friendly. And it took a bit of time to talk about that because there were 20 items, and they got it down to 10. And you need to know that they put a lot of work into this. They looked at those applications. Literally, there's a stack this tall of information they receive and they go through. So this is no small task, so I would ask that you approve their priorities and the accompanying application. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one question for Director Black, I believe. Just, I'm just wondering, the priorities that are here that are being proposed for this year, are they the same priorities that we have had in the recent prior years?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman. There's actually, there are more items being recommended this year than last year. I believe there were seven priorities that were identified in the last year's funding. However, it is a mix of the same topics as they come directly out of the federal regulations.
I also have another question. Is the amount of money that we have budgeted that we'll be able to give out approximately the same, or how does it compare to our prior years?
We anticipate that it'll be approximately the same. As you know, we can only budget a maximum of 15% of our total CDBG allocation to this, and so we have to wait until we have confirmation on what our CDBG allocation will be before we can get a final number, but we do anticipate that it'll be around $250,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to finally mention to the listening public that organizations that are nonprofit can make application to this commission. However, there are a lot of organizations out there that are nonprofit that are not subject to an audit. It may be a small nonprofit that's doing wonderful things, they're just not big enough to have an audit. I would encourage you to partner with a larger organization that does receive an audit, because your program, your programs that you're doing out there are phenomenal. There are a lot of things going on on the south side of Peoria and in the north valley with organizations that do not receive an audit. And so if you take the time to look around you, there are organizations that may partner with you who do receive an audit. It is very important that more and more organizations that are at the very grassroots level, that really have a major impact, reach out for this type of funding. That's what this funding is meant for. So if you've got any questions, any concerns, you call Cassie in the Grants Management Office, or Catherine, they do a wonderful job answering questions. They'll stay on the phone with you as long as you need. They'll draw you a picture, they'll do a Zoom. I just want a lot of the smaller organizations to come forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion on this item? I'd just like to take 30 seconds and echo Councilmember Moore's thanks to the Advisory Commission that does just an unbelievable amount of work on this. The amount of time that they spend going through all of these applications, evaluating them, matching them to what our priorities were to them in the first place, it's, it's just a lot of work that it would be almost impossible to have that come before us as an action item to try to do that. You know, it's always a situation where we don't have near the money that we need as on that CDBG allocation that we need to answer all the needs in our community. And if you look through those 10 areas, it'd really be hard to prioritize one, let alone 10. And so just, I know I speak on behalf of every council member here, to the Advisory Commission, we owe them a lot of thanks for this relatively thankless work, but they know and we know that these dollars are going to be well utilized in the community in one of the toughest years that we've seen around here in a long time. So thank you all. I'm not seeing any more lights, and we have a motion in a second to approve. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
20-270 is a request to approve a budget set aside authorization in the amount up to $250,000 for local Cures Economic Support Payments Grant Program.
Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the manager is going to speak to this item first before we move forward.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Euler. The state has informed us that we're applying for the, this big grant, which is the Business Interruption Grants that the state has offered, and there was a second round of funding that they opened up for local governments to apply for funding outside of the metro Chicago area. And we have applied for $1,185,000 in a Business Interruption Grant. This would be money that would provide for eligible businesses up to $15,000 of economic support, and for hotels, up to $25,000 of economic support. As the economic development team was looking at this grant, they really identified that hotels were one area that have really been adversely affected, and this was an opportunity that we could provide some additional support to our local hoteliers, and so that the grant was crafted in that way. We applied for this grant, we put in this that we would have a $250,000 reserve that we would be setting aside. Just before the meeting, we received a call from DCEO that said that if we're only going to reserve the $250,000, they would drop the grant down to 250. If we were to raise the reserve up to the full $1,185,000, they'll provide us with the $1,185,000. So this is really just a great opportunity for us to help anywhere from 50 to 78 businesses, depending on the amount of the money that we get, that we'll be able to put back out. Since it's CARES money, since this is money that came to the state through the coronavirus relief funds, it has to be out the door. relief funds, it has to be out the door by the end of the year. So we have to turn this grant around, and the economic development team is really poised to try and do that, to get this out on the street by the end of the year. So the good news is, well, while we're reserving, we would ask you to entertain an amendment to this to reserve the full amount, the good news is we'll get reimbursed for that and that the full amount will be coming back to us. So this is just another opportunity to help support local business here in our community.
Any questions for the manager before we go for a motion? Well, let's put a motion out there. Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve an amended set-aside authorization of 1.185 million for local Cures Economic Support Payments Grant Program.
Seconded by Councilman Ruck Regal. Now we'll go to questions, discussion. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say I think this is an incredible opportunity for any of the small businesses in our community to have access to these dollars. I know a lot of businesses did qualify for the PPP early on. That money has been spent, and right now, small businesses are running on fumes. So any little bit that can help a business, save a job, make it another month, this little bit will help them. So I am going to be supporting this, and I think it's a great thing for our community.
I have Councilman Grab next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Manager, is the deadline for dispersing the money, the end of January or the beginning of January?
My understanding is that it was that the money had to be out the door by the end of the year. Now, let me confirm that. It is, the businesses have to document paid expenses between that period of time, so I think we'll have through the first quarter to be able to pay them, but they're going to have to document those expenses through the end of this year. It's from March one, expenses incurred between March one and December 31, which was what, that was the requirement that was built into the coronavirus relief funds from the Treasury Department.
So we're looking at dispersing the funds when?
We'll look at dispersing the funds as quickly as we get applications in from businesses that can prove up their expenses, but we'll probably have that true-up period through the first quarter of the year to be able to make those payments out, as long as the documentation is there.
So they could be expecting some help by mid-January, if not before?
Or if not before, hopefully before. Hopefully, we're able to get more of the money right out the door as quickly as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, who would be the person in your, on your staff that will be receiving these grants, or questions that will come from small business owners about how to complete the application, what's, drill down more on eligibility, that sort of thing?
So the grants will have to be submitted through our Economic Development Department, so it would come to Kevin Evans and Caesar Suarez would be the two key individuals that would be working to process those grants.
And I would imagine this information will be out on our website tomorrow or the next day?
As soon as we get the approval, we'll get it out.
CityofPeoria.org?
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, let me present a scenario, just to make sure that I understand what's up. If there is a business that wishes to apply for this, and the period and the max that that business can get is $15,000, and the time involved here is from March, March one or March sometime?
March, March one of this year through December 31 of this year.
So from March one to now, they feel they've got $100,000 worth of eligible expenses. So as soon as they get the paperwork filled out, let's say that's a month from now, okay, and they submit it, do they get a check right now, or are they going to have to wait until the first quarter?
No. What we're looking to do is, and I just double-checked, in the grant, it does say by the end of January, so that, we have to have the money out the door by the end of January of this year, so of January 2021. So we'll be turning around the processing of those payments pretty quickly, once we've got the information and we can see that they're eligible, we're going to go ahead and process that payment and get that money out.
Which might mean well this side of New Year's?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
And just, you're welcome, Councilman, but just to your example, if they had $100,000 of eligible expenses, they're only, they're only eligible up to fifteen. I mean, I know you know that, I'm saying just for the listening public, make sure they know that that's, they did put a cap on that to potentially help more business. Thank you. Any other questions on this item? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two seventy-one is a request to approve and authorize the execution of a contract with resource management associates in the amount of $99,672 to administer the police sergeant and police lieutenant promotional examinations.
Councilman Grab?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve. Seconded, Councilman Riegenbach. Discussion on this item? Councilmember Jensen? Any further discussion on this item? Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two seventy-two is a request to approve a resolution designating 409 Western Avenue as Edward B. Gaines Fire Station Number Four.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very happy to bring forward this resolution. You may recall, we've talked about this for months now. With the new fire station going up on the south side of Peoria on Western, we had an opportunity to look back and, at our history, and what we found was that there was a gentleman who was the very first African-American firefighter in City of Peoria, and my recommendation was that we name this station in honor of his service. You may recall, one of the stories that I told when I first brought this to the council some months ago was of some of the indignities that he suffered as a result of being an African-American firefighter. One of the stories a family friend told us recently was that as a firefighter, he had to ride on the back of the truck because he was not allowed to ride inside the engine because of his race. And so what a fitting tribute for this brand-new station on the south side of Peoria on Western to be named after Captain Eddie B. Gaines. And I would ask that you approve this resolution, and when the station is finished and up and operational, we will have a bigger ceremony at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Ali. Is there any further discussion on this item? Well done, Councilmember Moore. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business. Twenty-one ninety-eight is a request to consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to bodywork establishments.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an example of good government at work. It took us a while to get to where we are, but we listened to each other and we compromised, and we tried to weigh all the interests involved, and we think we came up with a good solution, a good compromise, so I hope the entire council will support this amendment, and I move to approve.
Motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Is there discussion on this item? I would like to compliment and thank Councilmember Jensen for many weeks of back and forth between all the interested parties on this. As you said, there was quite a few different inputs on this, and it took some time to get there, but I do think that all parties recognize the difficulties and compromises necessary to help you get us to this point, so thank you very much. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two twenty-six is a request for the following. A is to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix B, the Unified Development Code, relating to various text amendments without changes to parking and duplex regulations. B is to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A relating to parking in formed districts, and C is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A relating to duplex regulations. And if we could have separate motions and votes, please.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may recall, these have previously come before us, all as one package. Some of them have had questions or concerns around them, so they've come back to us, broken up into three separate packages here, Item A being a packet of items that have not had any challenge or questions, and so I would move to approve Item A first.
A motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Riegenbach. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Euler on Item B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Item B, I'd move for a thirty-day deferral on this one to continue to work on this item.
Motion to defer this item. Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Discussion on the deferral? Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. And on C, Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve Item C.
Motion to approve. Seconded by Councilman Riegenbach. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item twenty-two thirty-one is a communication from the mayor and city manager with a request to discuss a fire protection and police protection tax.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of slides that I just wanted to kind of help to frame this discussion. We did have this discussion back on September eighth pertaining to whether or not the city wanted to pursue police and fire protection tax levies for the city of Peoria. Make sure I've got this on. Thank you. So our police and fire budgets are 54% of the general fund's budget. The police budget is 26.6 million, the fire budget is 19.8 million. That does not include benefits. This is just the direct operating expenses. Illinois law allows cities to levy property taxes to fund police and fire protection. The council could, if you so desired, you could adopt levies up to seven and a half cents per hundred dollars of assessed value without a referendum. Every penny on the property tax rate per hundred dollars of assessed value generates approximately $200,000. So you could generate roughly $1.5 million of property taxes with each of those property tax levies without going to referendum. Any levy over that seven and a half cents would require voter approval. So for example, if you were to go to a 10-cent property tax levy, which is a rate of 0.1%, that would generate $2 million within a fire protection tax. A rate of 10 cents, again, would generate $2 million for a police protection tax. Each one of those potential increases above that seven and a half cents, for example, adjusted this hypothetical $2 million, would require a separate question that would have to be presented to the voters. So that's your one option if you were looking to provide direct property tax support for police services or for fire services. The other option that the city has is you could simply craft an advisory question, place that on the ballot, and ask the voters about their willingness to support additional property taxes for public safety pensions or for public safety operations. There's more flexibility in an advisory question that the council would have. The deadline for putting this on the ballot for an April 6 election is January 19. So there's still time to have this discussion. We wanted, tonight, this is really just a discussion, to see if this is something the council wanted to pursue, to give us direction to come back with actual language, whether it's for an advisory referendum, or if you wanted to put a binding referendum on the ballot. Or if the council doesn't want to do anything, then it would just simply be taken up in future budget discussions as we go forward. So with that, I wanted to just kind of frame this discussion and turn the floor back over to you.
Good. Thank you. I think it's important, especially for the public here, that this item was brought forward not because we're saying we want to raise taxes. And so the headline, it seems, I think, maybe not the headline, but the gist of the articles when we discussed this a month ago was, the city council wants to raise taxes, and that's not the intention. The intention here, because we're just about finished with the second budget cycle, and you know, the wrapping up 2020 just got finished about a month ago, and in tonight, in the next week, we're going to be wrapping up what we need to do to bring 2021 in line. During the course of our discussions on the budget, there's always some discussion around the fact of, should we raise property taxes to help us get to where we need to go? So the intention of bringing this forward for discussion is, do we want to ask the taxpayers how they feel about that? Obviously, it's not going to impact 2020, and it's not going to impact 2021 because we're going to affirm that budget here in the next couple of weeks. It's to get feedback from the public, saying, what are your thoughts about the council potentially using property taxes, an increase in property taxes, to balance our budget? My gut feeling is, we all know what the answer to that is probably going to be, but an advisory referendum to ask them in the spring what their feelings are on that, I think is very appropriate and gives all of us as elected officials and the folks that will be elected on the next council, it gives them a good flavor for specifics on where our constituents are on this question. So that's not really, I'm not saying that for us. We get it. I just want to make sure that when the information goes out there, we're not having this discussion because we're saying we want to raise your taxes. We're having this discussion to see, are we going to put something on the ballot in April to ask our constituents their opinion on whether or not we should utilize property, an increase in property taxes to balance our budget? Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions for Mr. Manager. Is there a cost to put the question on the ballot, number one?
Is there, is there a cost?
Yes, to put the question on the ballot.
No. I mean, it takes an action of the council to put a question on the ballot. There may be some educational materials that the city council may want to put out, just explaining the reason for this. Those are additional costs that you may be incurring for that. The council and the city cannot advocate for the one way or other on the passage of that. We can, we can simply say, here's the educational immaterial behind it. So there may be some of that cost that you may incur behind it, but that would be about it.
Now, the sunset provision for pension fee will be 2021, correct?
That's correct. That fee ends in 2021, so beginning in 2022, we have a $2 million, additional $2 million shortfall in that, in funding pensions that we're going to have to make up, in addition to the assumed growth that we're going to see, which was built in. We sent that to you in the report backs for the budget, which we'll talk about later.
And what was your prediction for 2022? How much money we would need to move from general fund to, what the shortage would be?
Well, and I think we were looking at, in 2022, the general fund transfer will be about $8.8 million, is what we were looking at within 2022, and then that number grows. I think that's laid out here in the council communication.
Eight-point-eight million dollars?
Eight-point-eight million, up from 5.2.
So per your calculation of your presentation tonight, if you want to pay for the 100% debt amount, how much we would need to raise property taxes to, for, to cover the 8.8 million dollars?
Well, it would be... Well, it would be... You'd be looking at about a 44-cent increase in the property tax rate in order to cover that cost in total.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few questions. I guess primarily, I see the difference between the two different taxes is really that there's not a cap on the pension fund tax, correct?
That's correct. There's, I guess that's really the third option. The third option is council has, and this is just, you know, as we put the budget together with a simple majority vote, council could say, "We're going to continue to increase the property tax levies for pensions." There is no ceiling on that. It's just going to require the additional support or the addition, the majority of council is going to have to say, "We're willing to raise property taxes to cover those public safety pension costs."
We're not required to have a referendum on that, correct?
That's correct.
But can we do an advisory referendum for either tax?
I think there's, you could certainly craft an advisory question in any way that you wanted to, to ask the voters, what's their willingness to support funding operations with additional property taxes for operations or additional property taxes for pensions? I think that both are there. You know, that, how you craft the advisory question is really a matter of what council wants to give direction back to the corporation council to craft a question for you.
Then, the other question I have is the fire and police protection tax, if we were to go that route. It's not limited to covering pensions. The money raised can be used to support, as long as it supports the fire or police department.
It would be, it would be funding police and fire operations. So, if you think of it right now in the general fund, our general fund budget's roughly $100 million. You've got, you've got over 54 million of that that's direct operating expenses for police and fire. And then, you have, in addition to that, you have the benefit costs on top of that. But if you were to take, you're using other general fund revenues to support that now. So, if you increase the levy for police and fire services, that would then free up additional revenues that could be used to cover pension costs or could be used for other reasons.
But if we went, if we did it as a fire and police pension fund tax, it could only be used to cover the pension, is that correct?
If you, if you're levying in the current fire levy or police levy, yes, that can only be used for pensions, and that covers that cost. That doesn't, but, right now, if you were to, if you were to fund the pensions at 100% of what's needed to fund that right now, that would, next year in 2022 would be 8.8 million. In 2021, it's 5.2 million. If you put that 5.2 million into an increased property tax levy, you're freeing up 5.2 million and then 8.8 million in the general fund that could be used for other governmental purposes, including operations of police and fire.
The other component about this that I do like, if we go, if we decide to do a referendum, which I think I'm leaning towards that being a good idea, is that we do have an opportunity to educate the public. I know we talk about it all the time, but people don't realize how much money we spend and how much we're going to be obligated to spend these coming years. And so, that would be, if it's on the ballot, and we, it will give us an opportunity to really educate the public on what's going on and how there needs to be reform in Springfield and everything else. So, I think that aspect of it is a real positive too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're having a discussion, I'd just like to throw a few things out there. If we approve this, we're going to put a Band-Aid on our problem for another year or two. And then, we're going to have the same problem again and again and again because we have a police and fire system, including pensions, that I think we all know we cannot afford. We need a strategic discussion on what we're going to do about that. Instead of coming up against a problem like we had this year, where we just, well, let's keep our system the same, but cut it, just kind of cut it back, cut it here, cut it there. Now, but we're still in trouble, okay? And so, now we're going to have another tax to essentially fund the pensions, okay, which we can't afford, okay? And if the public goes along, or if it doesn't go along, it doesn't much matter because we're still going to run out of money. Now, I'd like to have a discussion on what are we going to do strategically to conform our police and fire efforts with our ability to pay for our police and fire efforts? We are ignoring that. We've been ignoring it for 30 years. And no one is surprised when we come along and say, "Oh, gosh, we're really in trouble. We don't have enough money. We need to figure out, you know, more money." Or, we keep relying on Springfield to change the rules. Really? Really? You know, they're not going to change the rules. Or, it is irresponsible of us to say, "Well, we're just not going to face this problem until they change the rules." You know, the chances are, they're not going to change the rules. If they do that, that would be wonderful. Just working on a discussion of the tax increase or not a tax increase or an advisory referendum or, you know, or what we can do by council action, I think is too narrow. That's one item within a strategic discussion that we owe, that's why people elected us. If we throw that on the ballot, one person out of every 3,000 is really going to understand all the issues involved. But it's off our, you know, we don't have to decide, okay? We were elected to make these kinds of decisions. And I would, I would really request that we undertake a true strategic discussion on police and fire. We need these folks. We need their services. And at this time, we, the way we have them organized, the way we have them set up, we cannot afford them. Let's not put this off again and again and again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Ruckregal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for our city manager. If I remember right, in our previous discussion on this, there is a cap on the number of referendum questions that we could do. Is that correct?
There is. I believe it's three. There are three advisors, or three questions that could be on the ballot at any given election.
Okay. So, all right. Thank you very much.
I had Councilmember Rigganbach next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a very timely discussion. And I think, Councilwoman Jensen, you hit the nail on the head, that the education piece makes this very attractive. We talk about this every Tuesday night during the budget cycle, about the issues we have and the limited resources we have. I think this is going to be an opportunity for us to really make it clear to the people that put us in these chairs what the situation is. I'm particularly, I'm leaning towards number two because I think that gives us some clear direction. And Councilman Kelly, I agree with a lot of what you said, but we need to keep the heat on Springfield because they set the rules. So, our hands are tied, and we need to make sure that they understand what the people of Peoria are telling us as they're elected officials. So, I gave the city manager and the finance director a bunch of questions a couple of weeks ago on this that, when we were talking, and I don't want that to get confused with the budget talk, so I'll be anxious to see that come back after we approve the budget. But I think this is an important piece for us that we ask the folks who put us here, is this something that needs to be on the table? We talk about all the emails and texts we get. Well, other people say they don't get hardly any texts or emails. So, I think this is the one fair way to really put it out there and let everybody have their say. I think you, a lot of you know, my wife's from Switzerland, and they have this very direct democracy, that they have questions like this on the ballot all the time. And it kind of, frankly, freaks me out. But how many times are we going to talk about this? So, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to instruct the manager to bring back language for number two, to place an advisory referendum on the ballot.
Motion, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Were you finished, Councilman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had Councilmember Ali next.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. I'm reminded that Illinois has the second highest property taxes in the nation. And Peoria has, among the cities in Illinois, some of the highest property taxes in the state. I've been listening, and I think you've been listening too, to our constituents that are saying, "We don't want higher property taxes. Our property taxes are too high. People are leaving this area because of property taxes. We're losing people because we continue to raise property taxes." I don't think we need to put this on the ballot because it's a waste of time. If we've been listening, people have been already telling us, "We don't want higher property taxes." So, we're asking a question, I think, that we already know the answer to. And we can do that just for the sake of doing it, or we can begin those strategic discussions that Councilman Kelly was talking about. I think we do need some strategic discussions on public safety and how we're going to manage, how we're going to pay. But I think to ask a question that we already know the answer to and to spend time waiting for the answer, I think it's just an exercise in fertility. I just, I don't think that's the direction to go for anybody that's been listening to Peoria residents. So, thank you.
I had Councilman Grab next.
Well, I agree with Councilor Ali 100%. And I think that there is an expectation on the part of our constituents that first thing we should be funding is public safety. Period. Period. So, if we want to have discussions, let's have a joint meeting with our state representatives who directly serve central Illinois, just as we're going to have a joint meeting with the county board Thursday, and see what suggestions they have for the predicament that not just Peoria, but many other municipalities find themselves contending with. It's not a Democrat issue. It's not a Republican issue. It's an issue that goes back many years when they started to raid the lock boxes that the pension money was placed, in which the pension money was placed. Go back quite a few governors to see this happening. That's the larger discussion we need to have. Those folks who might want to see the police or fire budgets take a big whack or be discredited, I think, would be fine and dandy to see this placed to the voters. Because they're going to be able to say, "See, I told you they don't support all those firehouses. See, I told you they don't want all those police officers." This is a rabbit hole, and I think everybody here knows it is. So, I will vote no on it for that reason. And I already indicated that that would be my stance several meetings ago. Again, our first priority is funding public safety. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Euler next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think if there's one thing I've been vocal and steadfast about in my time here on the council is that I don't support a property tax increase. I don't think the public supports a tax increase. But I see no harm in putting it to the public and allowing them to give us the opportunity of how they would like us to manage their finances. Because that's really what this comes down to, is this is the people's money. It's not our money. And we come to this budget cycle every year and discuss whether we're going to make cuts or whether we're going to raise taxes. And we get in these multi-month stalemates over the fact that some don't want to do either one and don't provide any alternative solutions to the fact that they don't want to do either one. But the reality of the situation is, is that we have to do something. In the last several budget cycles, we have made the decision to make cuts, but it's getting more and more difficult to continue to make cuts without revenue. And we owe it to the public to give us their input on how they feel about increasing taxes. And I'll say again, I will support putting it on the ballot, but I will advocate that my, my response to that on the ballot will be no. I don't think that that's in the best interest of the city of Peoria. But we cannot continue to go in the circles that we have gone in year after year and month after month and have the same discussion with, with no solutions and no proof of what the public really wants us to do here. And the pushback is always, "Don't make cuts." Well, the tax question just kind of hangs there and looms. And this is the opportunity to get that feedback and know what the public expects us to do in the tax arena. And I would certainly encourage those who don't support making cuts and don't support raising taxes to tell us in future budget discussions what it is you do propose us to do because we didn't see that this time around. And those discussions are going to get a lot more difficult in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be brief because most of the comments have been said by others. The purpose of my seconding the motion to ask the question is that, over in recent years, we've spent a lot of time trying to go to the public and asking them, what do they want? We can assume what they want, and the few that may reach us or see us may tell us what they want. But the vast majority of the folks in the city of Peoria don't get to see a council person, may not be able to come to a council meeting. And so, they may feel like their voice is not being heard. I was one of those folks who said, "Definitely no property taxes. There is no way on God's green earth that we can afford another property taxes here in Peoria." But, as has been stated, this question comes up over and over. Every year, it comes up. And so, having this question, and it's not raising a tax, it's asking the public the question, "Would you be willing to support this?" If they tell us no in a resounding way, then we can put this question to bed. It can stop coming up every year, and we can educate folks along the way as to why this is the way it is, what is happening at the state level that is making these costs go up. And so, in my view, it is very important to ask the community the question, and they can give us the answer. And we can put this to bed so that every year, we won't go around this merry-go-round, asking the same question over and over again and wringing our hands when we know we don't want to raise property taxes. Nobody wants higher property taxes. I certainly don't. But I want this question, item two, simply ask the question, and that many of us know what's going to come back. We believe it's going to come back a resounding no. But at least it gives everybody the opportunity to go in and tell us that for themselves, and they feel like their voice has been heard. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, there's absolutely no reason why these different topics can't run on parallel tracks. There's no reason in the world why we should wait until the results of potential April referendum to start having the discussions that have been mentioned by a lot of folks. I'd be very happy to ask our local legislators to come in. I'd be very happy to ask our local legislators to come in and have a discussion with us in January about what it is that they can do and will commit to us to do to address these pension issues. And I think they'll all be here. I think they'd be glad to come in here and help us, that we do not have to wait until April to find out what the results of a referendum, that we have a pretty good idea where it's gonna be. But to Councilwoman Moore's point, it's just gonna be that affirmation that when we do get to that point, start talking about '22, '23 budget, they are going to have spoken. And I think they're going to have spoken loudly. And so that part will just be affirmed. And so when we do get to that point next, whenever it is, the '22 and the '23 budget comes up, that's gonna be one that we're gonna have to address otherwise. And to Councilwoman Kelly's point, we don't need to, we shouldn't be waiting to find out what that's gonna be. And I'm happy to send an invitation out, or we can ask the city manager to get an invitation out to our local Springfield representatives to come in here and have a discussion with us about how they're gonna assist us, finally. And then, you know, we work together to help them accomplish that, because it's not gonna be an easy lift for them either. But I don't think it's an easy roar. I don't think it's, "We're gonna have to sit here and wait until the end of April to figure out, okay, well, I guess we're not gonna be able to raise property taxes." And I do take a little bit of an exception, that the city council in Peoria has been responsible for high property taxes. The city of Peoria is not the problem on high property taxes. When you look at your tax bill, we talk about it all the time. Less than 12 cents on each dollar goes to support everything that we do and everything that we provide in the city of Peoria. So if you go back and look at where the tax increases have been that contributed to high property taxes, it's not us. And I'll, we talk about that all the time, and I'm glad to keep talking about it, but we put the wrong message out there when we say that we have raised property taxes. I have one more that hasn't spoken yet, and then we'll start on round two. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Councilman Kelly said it right. And I agree, no more taxes, no more fees, and we definitely need to plan for our public safety. We all want the same thing. We want to have the best employees that are well-trained and well-equipped to do their job. And I don't think we need to pass the buck on to the people and ask them their opinion on what, if they wanna kick in the left shin or the right shin. You know, the buck stops here with us, we can make that decision. And Mayor, I absolutely agree that we should be having this discussion here with our state representatives as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have Councilmember Rick Regal next.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think your comments echo some really important lessons for us. If anybody thinks that there is one magic pill to solve problems that face us, then I think that they have not educated themselves on what has gotten us here and what lies in front of us. There is no one answer. And so I think when we're looking at this, we need to make sure that we're not talking about just one answer. We should be meeting with our legislatures. By the way, our legislators are, there's a referendum on them and hopefully their actions to be able to get us to this point, just on the next election cycle. And hopefully those questions are being asked on the campaign trail right now, because they really do matter to the citizens of Peoria. Two, we do have to have a strategy. That's why we have strategic planning sessions where we set the policies and priorities for the city. And maybe we need to spend a little bit more time of those, trying to find out the overall strategy. But part of the strategy that we do is also the budgeting process. And at least I see it this way, I hope, I probably imagine that many of you do, is we spend quite a bit of time on the budget process. So we do talk about strategy. If we have finished the budget process and not talked about strategy, shame on us, because that is our fault, because that should be in each and every one of our discussions. And third, I don't ever think it's a waste of time or futile to be able to listen to our constituents. I get a lot of emails, a lot of texts, I mean, we all do. And some are for, some are against some of the stuff that we do, but each and every one, and I know that the rest of the council values those comments as well. I've never heard one councilperson up here that has ever said that those comments, on whatever side, on whatever issue, aren't valid and aren't something that they appreciate that our citizens coming forward and talking about. So why would this be any different? We say that it's a foregone conclusion. I may think that I know where this is gonna go, but I'll tell you, there's been a lot of referendums lately, in the past 10 years that have happened in Peoria, where the people of Peoria have set the direction, and for the county of Peoria, local referendum questions that have actually set the tone and tenor for where we're going, and the citizens have surprised, I think, some people who put the questions on there. So I don't think that we ought to take this as a foregone conclusion, but I do think the citizens of Peoria have a right to tell us what they think. This is an education process, and I think we often talk about, "How can we engage the public more?" This is the perfect attribute to be able to do this. Look, we're not gonna solve this by ourself. And the 11 of us around here are gonna need to have the full, full and valid voice of Peoria to decide where the future goes on this. So let's start getting it. This is an important piece. I for one will be supporting the referendum be placed on the ballot, because I think that it is about time that the Peoria citizen has a say in where we go with this. And let's not just forget, you know, we talked about property taxes. We have high taxes compared to some of our other neighboring communities, you know, vote on food tax, entertainment taxes. And so it's in totality that we're talking about. And I think our city manager mentioned something that's very important, is whether, and it's not about whether or not this passes, but it gives a citizen a chance to be able to say, if they decide that this is something that they want, and again, we're not deciding to raise taxes here, that frees up money then for other things, which can be in operations of fire department, police department. Why would we not, as councilmembers representing this city, whether you're district or you're at large, you represent the city of Peoria, why would we not give the fire department and the police department their due and allow the citizens to speak on them? Just my thought.
Okay. Thank you. I had Councilmember Ali next.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. And I am ready to begin those discussions with our state reps in January. I hope that we will move forward with that. But I also wanna point out that the question, as is proposed here, the advisory-type question to the constituents, is a rather risky question. It's a rather tricky question, in my opinion, because we're not just asking the public to possibly, do they wanna raise property taxes to address a shortfall in the budget? We're not asking them that. We're asking them if they want to raise property taxes to support fire and police, our basic public safety employees. We're actually putting fire and police on the ballot. We're putting a group of our employees on a referendum, on a ballot, and we're asking, "Should we support them or not? Should we support fire and police? Should we support them? Should we fund them?" People pay taxes in order to have fire and police services, but we're gonna ask them, "Should we support them with our property taxes?" So if the answer comes back, that the public says, "No, we don't want our property taxes raised," in support of public safety, what does that mean? Does that mean that they don't support public safety? It certainly may give public safety employees that impression. So I think that there are some risks with this question, and I think that, I think it's a trick question. So I don't like it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilwoman Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor, we're talking about the manager bringing back a proposal. Is that correct? Will we be able to further address this general issue after that vote is taken?
Yeah, I think the manager mentioned we have until January...
No, I'm sorry. I meant tonight. In other words, I'd like to talk about the legislators. I'd like to talk about a strategic discussion, but we have a motion on just bringing something back. If we take a vote on that motion, can we continue to talk about this subject?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Graham was next.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the comments. Out of all the statements that are made, part of the statements seem to make sense. But I think a statement you made, Mayor, was a very important one, and we say it over and over and over again, but seems to just go over the heads of some of the folks who come to this body every time we have a meeting. And that is that we collect about 12 cents of each property tax dollar. Now, if we didn't have a special charter school district in Peoria called Peoria School District 150, we'd be bringing in about 66 cents per property tax dollar. But that's not the way things work in Peoria. So the lion's share of the property taxes goes to our largest school district. That's the lion's share, and it's been that way for years. Again, I believe Councilor Ali is absolutely correct in what she says about the pitfall of having this on the ballot, because my constituents expect, when we come to council and put together a budget, that it has a human face that protects them and their real estate values, protects them in their homes, and provides them the security they need. They feel that's why they are already paying these very high property taxes, and many of them don't know about that 12 cents, so we can't say that too much. That's part of the education piece. So I think this would be doomed for failure. I know, been an advocate, firm advocate of public safety budgets, robustly funding police and fire, and I make no apologies about it, from the very first day I walked into the city council chamber. And if Chuck Grab would vote no on that, then there must be something wrong with it, because I have the notion, and I do not believe it's erroneous, that that is our first responsibility to fund that. Now, since it's not working out very well because of the years of mismanagement down in Springfield, we have to have a mature discussion again. And I don't think we need to wait until January. What, why not right away? With our state lawmakers about what they can do in a substantive way to re-amortize the pension obligations. After all, folks, Peoria is not the only city with this problem. You all have to be opening up your IML emails, just as I am, giving us reports on the advocacy being done on behalf of the cities in our state. You have to. And they're pleading with the lawmakers in Springfield, as Councilor Riegenbach pointed out, to make some changes that will make it more manageable for us to make our payments each year. So that would be, I would say, where we would start. And after those efforts are made, then I believe that we could take a look at doing some of these other things, but I just don't believe this is gonna resonate, because I think the people in my district automatically feel that that's why they're paying taxes. They want their streets plowed, they wanna feel safe in their homes, and they call the police, they expect them to be there. There's a fire, they expect decent response times, and they don't expect firehouses to be closed down in their neighborhoods, affecting the public safety equation for the whole damn city. While it may appear to affect only one part of the city, it affects the whole ball of wax. So again, I believe we are playing into the hands of those who want to demonize government, and specifically, the bedrock, the bedrock of this nation. Our public safety people, our emergency responders, and our teachers. Police officers, firefighters, teachers are facing hundreds of thousands of layoffs because not only of difficulty in Springfield, but the nonsense that is occurring in Washington, DC, right now, tonight. So that's why I hesitate to be too stern with some of my fellow counselors. But a lot of this stuff that we're facing, and we continue to face, is because of externalities, things that we have little or no control over. You can only squeeze the budget so far, and then you are down into the muscle and the bone of the city. You're no longer protecting the people who live in the neighborhoods and protecting their real estate values. And if you wanna see a really bad situation for Peoria, those of you who are very concerned about this, people fleeing Illinois, population going down, leave our older neighborhoods without adequate first responder service. Leave any of our neighborhoods that way. Yeah, go way out north. And you see how fast the people will vote with their feet. And then take a look at what's happening to the treasury in Peoria. So that's how I analyze it, and maybe that's not the way some of the rest of you analyze it, but I'm gonna speak my mind. And it shouldn't be startling to any of you to hear what I'm saying, because I've been saying this since we first had all these discussions and recommendations brought forward to cut 27 police officers. Three of you were ready to make a motion to cut six firehouses, and we've already cut public works to the bone, not to mention code enforcement and community development. You basically have a skeleton crew. And now you're gonna go to the people and say, "Hey, do you support world peace? Do you support spending more money for world peace?" Well, what do you mean? Well, it's a ridiculous notion to put that forward, and you all know it's ridiculous. I will vote no on this. You bring it back in some other form, I'm gonna vote no for the reasons that I've discussed. Yes on going forward with discussions with our Springfield representatives, and yes on working with the IML and the other cities in this state to get real reform and get a package out of Washington that'll stop a double-dip recession that is looming. And it's coming. And you don't have to believe me, just listen to the words of the Federal Reserve chief about what's gonna happen. Read Moody's Analytics. Maybe you don't like Moody's Analytics. Read Moody's Analytics. Maybe you don't like Moody's Analytics. But if we do not get help, we are going to be in serious trouble. There is so much pain in this country right now. And I mean this, Mayor. There are people hurting who are unemployed in our city, small businesses ready to go under. And they're fiddling and playing games. The nonsense rolls right downhill, and here we are. Thank you.
Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to clarify my point that I was making. I don't think it's a good idea to pass on such a devious-type question to the public about, do you want the, do you want public safety, basically? I think that's a very and if so, then we need to tax you. I think that's the wrong direction. I really believe we can solve our own problems. We already know what that answer is from the public. They don't want any more tax increases. They voted us in to solve the problem. I think we can at least give it a whack ourselves first. If we have problems, then maybe we can discuss it, but I think we can solve our own problems first. Thank you.
Seeing no more lights on the board here, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with eight ayes, three noes, voting no. Councilmembers Ali, Grab, and Kelly. Madam Clerk.
Twenty dash two forty-four.
Councilman Kelly. Councilman Montalongo.
I meant hit the no button on that one.
Okay. Let the...
I was trying to hit it.
Please let the record...
Hit the wrong one.
No problem. Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Montalongo inadvertently hit the yes, and he will be a no. So it was seven ayes, four noes.
Twenty dash two forty-four is a request to concur with... Do you have one more question here?
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did ask earlier if we could continue on this once that particular motion passed.
We can. And we will.
We will, or we are going to now?
We can and we will, meaning new business, if you want to bring it up under old business. It doesn't, it won't jump ahead of an agenda item, but we can talk about those at either point in time. I'd recommend new business, since it's a new item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Twenty dash two forty-four is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C in neighborhood commercial district for an assisted living, sober living facility for property 2419 North Prospect Road.
Councilmember Rigenbach. We have a motion to table, seconded by Councilman Euler. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes, ten ayes, no noes. Madam Clerk.
Twenty dash two sixty-five is a request to receive and file a presentation and discussion of the 2021 revised annual budget.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's really, I pulled up the presentation from last week's council meeting. I changed the date on it and made one minor graphic change later in the document, so it really hasn't changed from last week. And I was really only pulling this up just for any kind of questions that council may have. The, we did have the presentation of the 2021 budget. The, with the overview of the budget, we did have four report-back questions. That was included in the packet. The first was, when is the timeline on the federal funds for the Adams-Jefferson one-way, two-way conversion, which we responded that that needs to be completed by July of 2021? We had the age of the fire department vehicles. We did have a report back on PCI, and then we had the report back on, kind of a look back on our pension payments for police and fire pensions, and then a look forward on the police and fire pensions in terms of what the future obligations hold for us out for the next 20 years. And then there was the response back on the, how can the Constitution be amended? So at this point, I would be really open for any kind of questions council may have, or if there are additional report backs or other questions on the budget that council may have that I'd be happy to answer, or staff that are here in the Room 404 can answer for you as well.
Questions for the manager. Councilmember Jensen is first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you recall, there was an additional item I had asked for that you were going to do a report back on during our last council meeting. It was about the discrepancy about the number of positions that we've eliminated.
Yes, well, we can clarify that, and we'll get that back. I apologize, I missed that one in terms of writing it down. We'll get that back to you in the next iteration of the budget report backs. So my apologies.
Thank you.
I think Councilmember Sears next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question for Mr. Manager. Page seven of the report back you just gave us. I just want to make sure I understand and my colleagues understand. If you could, do you have page seven for me? Just year 2022, please.
Yes.
If you could read that across, because I want to make sure everybody understands, or I understand, that what you talked about earlier, you asked my two important question I asked, which is 44 cents was the, your answer to break even on the, and then the other, your other answer was $8.8 million that we need to transfer. Now, this is not the cost. This is additional money, correct?
Okay, let me start. In the year 2022, and this chart shows you the 20 years of projected payments, benefit payments, that we will be making based upon the actuaries' review of both our fire pensions system and our police pension system. And in that, they are estimating that we are going to be paying in 2022, and I'll start, well, I'll start with the line that says benefits. We will be paying out in 2022 $16.8 million, or just under $16.8 million, to our fire pensioners, and we will be paying out $19.8 million to our police pensioners. The required contributions for both the city and the employees combined in total will be $15.4 million for, just under $15.5 million for fire, and $17.4 million for police. Of that, $1.6 million comes from the firefighters, that their employee contribution, and $1.994 million comes from the police officers, which is their employee contribution. The remaining $13.9 million and $15.4 million has to come from the city taxpayers. That's the required contributions that we have to meet. That total totals up, in terms of the city contribution in 2022, to $29.25 million. We only have funds set aside that will amount to about 21, or 20.3 million dollars, and then we have to come up with the additional 8.8 out of the general fund to make up that 29.3. So that's the shortfall from what we're currently levying in taxes, and that we're going to have to make up. Now, what this table also shows you is that between 2020 and 2040, which is when we have to meet our required contributions, the total amount that the city is going to have to contribute is over a billion dollars that we're going to have to contribute. Now, if you take that off of what we're currently contributing today, that means that we have to come up with $780 million more than what we're currently contributing over the next 20 years. $780 million. That's the structural challenge that we're facing. That's the very last page of the budget report back, page seven.
So just to make sure I remember the numbers, the 12 cents we're collecting per dollar of real estate property taxes in 2021, how much money will we be collecting?
Overall, in the total property tax levy that we'll be collecting in your budget book, if we turn now into your larger budget book, the, and this would be on page 28 of your budget book, we will be levying in 2021 $30.9 million in property taxes. Of that, 85% of that will be going towards pensions. 15% of that will be going towards roads. And then you have, in addition to that, then you also have 6 million that will be going towards the library as well.
So 2023 should be the first year where 100% of our property taxes that we collect will go to...
No, the policy direction, what these, what this budget does, and the five-year projection going out does, is in essence freezes property taxes that are being levied for public safety pensions, and we're taking money out of the general fund and using that to make those pension payments. Because the policy direction from the council has been, we don't want to raise taxes, so we're not raising taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for the manager? Mr. Manager, the expectation is, from here, further questions this evening?
Well, the, tonight we had our budget hearing. If council has no other questions, and you're ready to simply vote on the 2021 budget, we can have the paperwork prepared to adopt the appropriation and levy ordinance at the next council meeting, which would be November 10th, instead of continuing this to November 17th. And then we can, we can proceed with taking action on that, if that's the desire of the council at this point in time.
Okay. Councilmember Sears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve the 2021 budget. Ask Bennett.
So it's going to be a motion to bring the ordinance back. By Councilman Sears, their second. Councilman Euler. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes with nine ayes, two noes. Councilmembers Ali and Grab. Madam Clerk.
If there's no further unfinished business?
Unfinished business? Any unfinished business tonight? Seeing no lights. Councilman Kelly.
Yes, I have some unfinished business.
Okay.
Is my mic on?
It is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to our item on the referendum, or what we're going to do about public safety, I'd like to make a few points, and first of all, I'm very much in favor of a meeting with our legislators. If we can do it between now and the end of the year, I think that would be better. Because in January, they start their new session. And it's not that they have nothing to do right now, but perhaps they have a little more time, and we might want to meet twice, that sort of thing. I would second what Councilman Grab had to say. We happen not to be the only city in the state of Illinois. I understand that there are places called Rockford, Springfield, Marion, Quad Cities, Champaign, et cetera. They are all trying to get this done. This isn't news. And we have been in touch with our legislators well before I got on this council, trying to get some changes in these pension obligations that we have. I, I am saying that to say that we should certainly pursue our delegation. But I'm personally not holding out a great deal of hope. They know the situation, and somehow, some way, they're not able to get the job done. So if they don't get the job done, what do we do? Okay? If we don't get money from Washington, if we don't get money from Springfield, you know, what do we do? And I'd like to have that strategic discussion. Again, going the other way with Councilman Grab, if, if public safety is so unbelievably important, why don't we double the budget for our police department and our fire department? Wouldn't that make us safer? Well, I suppose so. But all of a sudden, we realize there has to be a balance. You can't just say I'm for public safety and walk away. It has a cost, and we cannot afford the cost we have now. I'm fairly confident, even though I don't have a lot of big ideas about this, I'm fairly confident that reorganizing what we have now can save us money and get this under control. Manager just talked about the fact that all we have is a billion dollars staring us in the face between now and 20 years from now. A billion dollars. We just sit here every year, just sit here and say, oh, gosh, we're out of money again. Oh, gosh. It's not a surprise. Everybody knows it, and everybody knows we can't keep going this way. So I would like to have, and by the way, yes, we see it in the budget, but adopting a budget is not the same as reorganizing the factors in the budget. That's a separate discussion. So we, we're probably going to pass this, but there's no reorganization, there's no, you know, and I think that's what we need to talk about. So I would like, and I don't quite know how to do this, but, Mr. Manager, perhaps you could help me here. I would like you to bring back to us an outline of discussion filled in possibly by different members of the council who may contact you in the next two weeks to see if we can agree on an agenda, and then move from that agenda to a policy session or something like that, where we can have a freewheeling discussion to try to get us in a much more rational place than we are right now. So I would, does that require a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I think, I think it does, just to make sure that we're giving the manager concurrence of council members that want to go along with this, but I think we need to tighten it up exactly what it is that we're requesting him to do. And then the timeline to actually have those discussions is going to be based on availability of, you know, folks that we want to, I'm just saying, it's going to be hard to necessarily fast-track this to happen in the next month.
I understand that, and this discussion may go on until the summer. But I think we need to have this discussion, but to, Mr. Manager, could you bring us back a prospective agenda on strategic discussions on what to do about our police and our fire system in Peoria? And please be especially open to suggestions for that agenda from the different members of the council, and from, and certainly from police and fire. Thank you. I, I think that, and so I would make that motion, and I think that this is driven somewhat by the idea that what we're doing is just untenable. We cannot continue to go this way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Councilman Montalongo. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Moore.
Oh, I wasn't speaking to this item.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Just a question. Was there, could you just repeat the gist of the motion? Was there a timeline?
The timeline for a report back is our next meeting, two weeks from now.
Okay.
Councilman Ruckregel?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's good for us to be able to have this conversation. I don't think there's any harm in it. I would lead the thought, though, with what Councilmember Grab said, which is, I think it's important to meet with our legislators first, and that may actually help tailor some of the strategic pieces as well. I think it's an important conversation, not only to have once, and I think Councilmember Grab's conversation really was, that's an ongoing conversation, and let's get those started. And I think that we ought to have that conversation first before having that strategic plan.
I'm seeing no additional lights on this topic. Councilman Grab.
Just one more thought. We are not really going to our state lawmakers like mendicants with our hands out. Please give us something. We're not doing that with our federal lawmakers either. Because last I looked, people in my district and in this city pay both federal and state taxes. We're not asking for a handout. We're asking for a fair deal, especially in the wake of this pandemic, which has cockeyed virtually every government budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion in the second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes with ten ayes, one no. Councilmember Moore. Additional unfinished business. Councilmember Moore, did you have unfinished?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As we come to a conclusion for 2021, I don't want anyone to lose sight of the fact that the South Side has one less fire station on Jefferson. And we have one less fire station during the time of the year that this area is most vulnerable. I don't want anybody to lose sight of that, or to think that, you know, we've resolved some major issues tonight or the last few weeks, because that is still something that's out there. And I believe it's something that, I'm praying that there is nothing that we have to regret come spring. But for peace of mind for individuals who live in those areas and see the types of things that happen over the winter time, it's a concern, and it will continue to be a concern. I want to thank those in the community who live in the South Side, who have called or written, but I would encourage you to continue to do that, to continue to call everyone around this horseshoe and continue to email everyone around this horseshoe so that they know what your concern is. It was passed by a majority of this council to close that fire station. I opposed it. I stood out there in opposition to it, and I continue to be in opposition to closing a station during this time of year, closing a station anytime, but particularly when it's most vulnerable this time of year. I just wanted to make sure that, for the record, everyone understands in the community that that is not something that I feel is acceptable to have done. And I'm very thankful for those who have stood up to say they agree with me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business tonight? Unfinished? Councilman Regenbach?
Oh, no, I had new business. I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? Madam Clerk?
We're at new business.
Councilman Regenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the public, since council will be at a special meeting on Thursday night, that Thursday is the first P-Town soup since the quarantine took place. It's going to be a drive-through and carry-out, but it will be at the East Bluff Community Center, and it'll be chili by Chef Kevin Roker. And it's a great cause. This time, it's going to be supporting the food pantry right there at the East Bluff Community Center. So if you want some good food, I know my son Moses can't wait to get that chili again. So come out on Thursday, and we'll be thinking of you as we're sitting at our meeting.
I think there's a to-go option on that, too, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir. Yes.
And do you have any details on that, or?
Yeah. I have an email with the details here for carry-out. You can enter through the New York Street entrance. Masks will be required, of course, but you'll get a boxed dinner with chili, sandwich, brownie, and a beverage.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore? Okay. Any other new business this evening? New business? Madam Clerk?
Yes, we would be at Citizens Opportunity to Address the City Council, and the city clerk's office did not receive any emails.
Is there anyone who would like to address the city council tonight and citizens to address? I haven't received any cards. Okay. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting by Councilmember Sears, seconded by Councilmember Ali. If there's no discussion, please cast your ballots. The motion passes. We'd like to thank Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. There will be no council meeting next Tuesday on November 3rd. We encourage everyone to make sure they get out there and vote if you haven't already done so. We will be back in session for our regularly scheduled meeting on November 10th. This meeting is adjourned.